challenging than ever. These events have had a significant impact on the retail climate, both on a national and local level, as you well know. And we have yet to see how many stores and other businesses are not going to survive this at the mall and elsewhere. So we face a particularly daunting situation here in New York because enclosed malls remain closed, with no anticipated reopening date yet announced by the state. Nonetheless, we had done this deal before the pandemic and Ollies is upholding its lease agreement with the mall and remaining optimistic about this market. They're taking an anchor space. They're asking for 615 square feet less than the signage that was there before. They will not have any interior mall entrance access inside signage or visibility. So it's not much more critical that they have adequate exterior identification for their location and their only entrance. I hope now, more than ever, the board will be as accommodating as possible in considering something as basic as signage for this major retailer. Keeping in mind the signage they're requesting is proportional to the size of their store. It's appropriate for both the aesthetics of the building, as well as the characteristics of this commercially zoned shopping district. I ask the board to grant this request to help us welcome and position Ollies for success here in the town of Plattsburgh. Thank you.
Do we have one more outside?
I'm gonna check.
Yeah, we're checking if we have any more outside.
Can you just clarify what is A and what is B? Because we're looking at the package that's coming.
A, A is the front face.
So that's 150?
Yep, and then B is the, uh...
Eighty-three.
Eighty-three. Eighty-nine side.
Uh, number they're seeing so far. Make one last call for Zoom.
Okay, on, anybody on Zoom looking to make a public comment on these two variants?
Jeff.
Yes, if I may please.
Okay, Jeff, go ahead.
Thank you. Jeff Reeves, I'm the president of the sign company that, excuse me, would be, uh, building the sign for Ollies. We do, well, in the past, we've probably done about 65% of their business over the last five years. Eighty-some stores in states from Texas to Minnesota and then all the way east coast and Florida. So we've done quite a bit of work with Ollies. And for the size of the location, not that it's a relevant fact, but this is on a much smaller side of the size of signs than we normally do. Normal storefront minimum for a size, the sign that's, excuse me, I'm building the size would be 250 square feet. Side would be 150. And, uh, and we did not ask for more than this out of respect for your code and what's changed, understanding, uh, kind of the direction that's, that a lot of towns are going. Again, uh, out of respect for that, we're not asking for even half of what was there. We, we are looking to watch out for the best interest of the mall, the potential employees there, and of course, Ollies, you know, ultimately to be successful. Uh, so visibility and the ability to track shoppers is, uh, is obviously very, very important. So we feel like these are the minimum size signs that will achieve that result, given the, uh, great setbacks we have from, in the parking lot from the different roadways. So I'm willing to take any questions and answer any questions about all the implications we've done for Ollies. I've represented them for years in many, many variance hearings and understand your concerns and just hoping and urging the board to approve this as requested.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else on Zoom? If you're, if you're muted or we can't see your picture and you need to unmute yourself, right, Drew?
Yep. Or raise your hand yourself.
I don't, right now, I don't see a picture of, uh... I don't see anybody's picture except for Jeff and Amy Menard. So...
All right, anybody like to make a motion?
So again, this property has, uh, no inside entrance for all the people and visibility. They have no main visibility from the main road, being Smithfield Boulevard, Route Three. They're in the, they're tucked on the backside of this building, which encompasses all the way around. And so those are just factors that, you know, where the variance comes in place for different properties. Because all, all properties are the same. You know, some have different setbacks, trees in the way, you know, buildings blocking it. This one is, you know, pretty much blocked off to the world, this location. So it's just something I just want you guys to think about.
Amy Menard, are you wanting to make a comment? I seen your, your picture coming up there. Can you hear me?
No, they've been there.
Okay.
They're from the other thing.
The whole time. Again, for the two sign theory, the, um, pretty much all the, or all the, all, the rest of the stores all have two signs. Target has more than one. JCPenney has more than one. Dick's has more than one. Kohl's has more than one. And Best Buy has more than one sign. So again, just something just to think about.
Just to make it official, close the public hearing portion of the meeting.
Okay, so the public hearing portion is now closed.
And we would need a motion to either approve or deny this request.
We'll make a motion to approve the request.
Second.
Second.
Show of hands and a roll call vote.
Is this for A?
Yes.
This is for A?
What we're doing, I thought it was all one.
It's an A to B. So A is the front face right here, and then B is this.
I thought it was all one too.
So A.
Okay.
A is what we're voting on right now.
Henry Hill.
Yes.
Sherman Rubin.
Yes.
Bossa LaCorte.
Yes.
Roger Black.
Yes.
Marian Alcindor.
Yes.
All right.
Okay, so variance A was approved, can you actually?
B is eighty-three square feet. You got a second?
Make a motion to...
Make a motion in a second.
Second.
And then show of hands and a roll call vote.
Henry Hill.
Yes.
Sherman Rubin.
Yes.
Bossa LaCorte.
Yes.
Roger Black.
Yes.
Marian Alcindor.
Yes.
Variants B was approved naturally. I will mention that a few months back, we had Kohl's here, and this is kind of exact same square footage.
Right.
So I think, uh, you guys have pointed out that JCPenney's had 150 square foot sign. You made Kohl's comply with that. Theirs is now 150 square, so you are being consistent with the exterior signage at mall, at the mall.
All righty.
Okay.
Uh, thank you, folks, for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Thank you very much, all.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
And...
All right.
Aaron, back there.
Oh, I guess.
Aaron is back there, I can see him. Wait for Don to do a little housekeeping.
Ollies, the one.
Okay, so the next appeal is 2184 and 2185. So for some reason, instead of doing A to B, we did 24, 84, 2184 and 85. Town Fair Tire at 46 Route Three. So 2184 area variance is a request to, uh, to be allowed to install 91.5 square foot sign on the building, fronting Route Three, which is 62.27 square feet more than the 29.23 square foot allowed commercial district. So the narrow side of the building actually faces Route Three. That's why it's such a high number there. They're not allowed a whole lot because of the width of that building. The second one, 2185, is a request to be allowed to install a 91.5 square foot sign, so same size as sign, on the building in front of Le Bear Street, which is 8.15 square feet more than the 83 square foot allowed. So on this one, this is the long side of the building. Therefore, it's less. So the, but most signs are exactly the same size, it's just that, that the building is very long but narrow. Okay, so they're in the old Midas Building. So this is Route Three here. This is the off-ramp to the highway, Smithfield Boulevard. This is Le Bear Street. It is this L-shaped lot right here, so they front on Le Bear as well as Route Three. So they are reutilizing the existing Midas Building and then adding an addition on there where the garage base will be. That's why you can, you can see here, the width of that building is not very wide, but the length of it is very long. So this is all zone commercial, so you can see the L shape right here. Here's a closer look at it. So this is the existing, you know, what used to be the Midas Building right here. The driveway does come in and come back out on here, so there's access on both ends. So here's what that narrow side looks like. So they're looking to put that 91 square foot sign up here. As you can see at the top of the roof, you can see that over here on the side, that's where the other one's gonna go. So this is their showroom area here, and then you can tell down here is where they're currently constructing the addition. So you got a sign here and a sign up here. So this is the, the layout of that property. So existing parking lot in the front, they've got some islands in here. Here's that exit off to Le Bear Street. This is the addition part of the existing building right here. So there's a sign here and a sign here. And this is what is proposed, so Town Fair Tire, that's above the main entrance. This is on the end facing Route Three right here. Okay, Aaron, I'll turn it over to you.
All right, thank you. Uh, Town Fair Tire, uh, received site plan approval, uh, late last fall, uh, obviously for this expansion, to reutilize the Midas Building and then add, as I'll mention, all those service bays that you see on the right-hand side of the, uh, front elevation. Uh, the lot is unique, that it has, you know, broad access on Le Bear and Route Three. Uh, so it allows the signage on, you know, both fronts. Uh, Town Fair Tire, uh, this is actually marked their 100th store in the greater New England and their first in New York. So they're obviously excited to come to the market. And, you know, what we have presented here is, you know, their typical branding. Uh, so amongst their 100 stores, over 90% of them have basically this exact sign package where we utilize, you know, three-foot-high lettering, uh, which equates to the 91 square feet. Uh, so looking at the Le Bear side, uh, although the building is substantially longer, so if we looked at the half a square foot, the linear foot, uh, we would be well under that number, uh, because that number gets capped at 50 feet. And then when you look at the multiplier, because we are, you know, well over on your feet off the road, we're allowed the two-thirds multiplier that brings us up to 83 square feet. And utilizing their standard three-foot lettering is 91. Uh, so there's, you know, roughly a 10% increase on that front elevation facing Le Bear. Uh, so relatively minor variance, in our opinion. And then looking at the side facing Route Three, you know, because of the shape of the lot being such a skinny lot, you know, the building is fairly skinny, you know, it's only 35 feet wide. Uh, unlike some of our neighbors who have, you know, wider frontages on Route Three, you know, they get to take advantage of having, you know, more signage than we do, basically just because, you know, the configuration of the lot. Uh, but again, they have the same setback. So, you know, we're located, you know, 134 feet off of the right-of-way, uh, only being 35 feet wide. It basically limits us as to what we could do for the ordinance for signage. Uh, so what we're looking to do is utilize, you know, the same sign that they use on other facilities and the same sign that we're proposing on their east face, replace that same sign on the south face. And what that does is, you know, because we are, you know, down, look at from the street view, uh, you know, so far a setback from that road is 134 feet, and such a skinny building, we really feel that that helps, you know, identify our location, uh, in that neighborhood. We did supply some photographs of some other facilities nearby, uh, to compare, you know, signage and what they had and, you know, what we're looking at. And, you know, if you look at, you know, we did, uh, you know, the AutoZone, for example, you know, the discussion earlier tonight of that, you know, if you're putting on a branding stripe that contributes signage, but just looking at the illuminated part of the AutoZone sign, the word AutoZone, the little orange, that's basically three-foot tall by a little over 35 feet long, but actually over 100 square feet designated. So, you know, 10, 15% larger than what we're proposing. Uh, and then you look at, you know, even our next-door neighbor, you know, Sherman Williams, you know, has significantly larger sign, you know, they're able to do that, obviously because of, you know, the width of their building. What's unique is that although Sherman Williams has more frontage on Route Three, so they allow that wider sign, uh, when we're done with construction with the addition, our building is very comparable to what the Sherman Williams building is in total square footage. You know, so we're gonna be, you know, just under 8,000 square feet where the Sherman Williams building is, right around 8,000 square feet. So, you know, we're basically the same size as Sherman Williams, but because we're long and skinny, we're kind of handcuffed to what the ordinance allows us for signage. So what we're putting for you again is what Town Fair would consider their, you know, product typical sign. Uh, as I said, over 90% of their facility is located throughout New England. Uh, we're looking to, you know, put that same sign, signage here and, you know, welcome them to the neighborhood. So, you know, I have John, Town Fair Tire, here on the Zoom meeting, uh, help answer any questions. Or maybe I'll support enough to pass the question.
So you're saying the same exact size sign on both sides of the building?
That's correct, yes. So Chairman's asking that the signs are both exactly the same size going on the two different sides of the building, correct?
Correct.
I was just bringing up that we had some discussions with Panera Bread as well as Chick-fil-A and issues with...
Oh, this is...
Signs and so forth, and I, I would just caution, you know, regardless of the advance of Sherman Williams, they obviously have capacity to have that size sign. That we would be kind of going against what we discussed just months ago with some of these other stores and what they can do on their side.
The difference being is that this actually faces on two separate squares.
This actually has frontage on Main Public Street, on Le Bear Street. Therefore, it does have legal frontage, therefore, be the definition of your ordinance, allowing that frontage to occur, signage on the east side to occur. That is what our driveway, our traffic, we do have, you know, cars that come in from that side, so that is our legal frontage as well. We are basically a cornered lot.
Yeah, the question...
I'm not arguing the point about what it is. I'm saying there's just that we're allowing a lot of variance there for the Route Three.
The Route Three one is, yes, but the, the...
All right, yeah, so the question is the number of signs, it's only the size of the sign.
I can't really sit here and make an argument based on the size of Sherman Building because our code doesn't give us the fortitude to say, oh, it depends on how large your building is. Otherwise, we're starting to make decisions based on the wrong criteria. So I don't want to use that as our basis for approving or disapproving.
You know, our building is, you know, 100 and, oh, almost 190 feet long, you know, so if you looked at the half a square foot, the linear foot, you know, that'd be like 95 square feet. If you apply the multiplier to that, you know, you'd be, you know, up over 150 square feet. But because that, you know, half a square foot is capped at 50, that brings it to the 83 number. So, you know, we're well under the half a square foot, the linear foot. You know, we're only, you know, two-thirds of that number or less than two-thirds of that number. But, you know, because of the 50-foot cap, that's why we have the, you know, slightly 10% increase on the east face.
I believe they're, they're more special about the Route Three side, not the, uh, Le Bear side.
Yeah. Right, I mean, it tends, obviously, is, you know, because we are so skinny, you know, the thought is that a sign, you know, it looks bigger on that because it is such a skinny face that a sign 135 feet away, with shorter lettering, smaller, you know, kind of disappears in the background and it comes, you know...
But we'd also have to make that same argument down Smithville Boulevard with all those plazas there, that if State Farm only has a 15 or 20-foot wide piece of Smithville Boulevard, he still can't have 100% of his width as a signage. So I'd be cautious to use the argument based on the width of the building, because otherwise, every place in the town of Plattsburgh would say, well, gee, everybody that's, belongs in that Smithville Boulevard stretch would all want signs that are exactly the width of their offices.
All right, open up the public hearing portion of the meeting. Who's, anybody out there?
Public hearing portion of the meeting is now open. We have one here in present. Go ahead.
Take the day.
Hello, my name is Jesse Daniels from Daniel Signs. I was just here for the prior, um, meeting. I just figured I'd stick around this into this one. Um, the one thing I do have to say is if you, if you added up the, the linear footage of both sides of the building that face, uh, the roadways, and you, you did it as a whole and added that together, um, the square footage is probably pretty close to allowable, just based on both sides of the building, and you just average them out and put them together. Uh, the example that you gave for the plaza is they only have one side facing a roadway. And if their store is only 20 square feet facing that one roadway, uh, that'd be the reasoning, because they don't have that side that goes in depth facing a roadway.
Right, but the argument here is that he's trying to make the argument that the width of the building, I'm just trying to make sure that we're not, if we're gonna follow the presenter's argument that the width of the building is 35 feet, I don't want to use that as the argument.
Yep, and so my reasoning is, uh, if you take the two sides and add, average them together, because they both face roadways, then it's pretty close, that's a pretty close compliance.
You have 190 feet plus 35 feet, the total, you know, building face that faces a public right-of-way and use the half a square foot, the linear foot with the multiplier to the distance off the road, we would be allowed 188 square feet, which is greater than what the request is.
So he's giving some on the long side and he's taking some on the short side, but at the end of the day, it's, it's about the same. Because he has two roadways. That, that's the reason.
I would just be concerned about the precedent. If we're gonna make that, then we're changing the definition of what those calculations in the zoning manual would tell us to do. That's all.
So it was a given, it was a give and take.
I'm not saying yes or no, I'm just saying for make that argument, I don't want to go...
Well, we understand, I guess that's why, you know, we provide you that location map and, you know, some of the other signs in the neighborhood, you know, AutoZone being, you know, only 70 feet off the road, but yet they have over 100 square feet. And their building, you know, actually has signage on, in the Bank Street and, uh, Smithfield Boulevard. So, you know, they're saying things, they're a cornered lot, they have signage on both sides. You know, so again, you know, we're asking for less than what they have. So keeping with the character of the neighborhood and the signs of the neighbors, you know, proportional and not out of character with what's currently there. And as Jesse said, it would, if you were to look at all the frontage as a whole, it would be compliant.
And if you're inclined to, to grant the variance and worry about precedent setting, you'd want to state reasons of fact as to why this variance is appropriate, which could be the, the shape of the lot, the fairly odd shape of the building along the way. Now, that sets it apart from a square box, so it will be asking for the same.
Yeah, to be clear, that actually, you know, that same argument was actually discussed when we did Panera Bread. You know, the issue was a similar situation where we had a rectangular shaped building and we looked at, one side was under the half a square foot, the linear foot, and one side was over. But when you looked at the overall, we said, well, you know, we had seven extra feet on this side. If we applied to the front, they would actually match up. So, you know, that exact argument was looked at by the board only, you know, less than a year ago and uses rationale for granting other variance.
My point of only bringing these up is to make sure what Matt just said is that we're using the right reason and making sure we don't go down a hole based on the arguments that being presented, because they don't hold up in my opinion.
No, precedent setting is always a good thing to keep in mind, and the way to, to deal with it is to make findings of fact and separate this application from everything else that comes in. That way, you're not setting a precedent overall, you're just saying this is a different application in a square box that only faces one road. Yeah, so this one's a give and take essentially. They're giving some and they're taking some, which will balance back out.
Drew, is there anybody else that wants to speak?
Nobody else outside?
No. No one outside?
All right, anybody on, uh, Zoom that would like to comment to this?
Does not appear to me.
What's that?
Does not appear to me.
Nobody?
Nope.
We're just checking, Drew's saying he's not getting anybody that wants to comment. Hopefully, we're not excluding anybody. If we do, we apologize, we're trying to do our best.
No, there's no man raised, no meeting.
Okay. Uh, I will let you know this did go down to the county, just like the previous ones. There's no meeting, so majority plus one's not required, just a majority.
Probably also would like to just bring up the idea that, given the earlier session that we just had this discussion about signs that were being the same size and so forth, um, you know, putting these on, you'd have to be careful that if we're gonna just use the argument that they're the same size, um, is that allowable? We're not gonna ask to minimize the variance request?
So they would have to make a motion saying...
They are two separate, two separate ones.
Yeah, no, I know that, just want you to mind. So the first one is for the Route Three side, the second one is for Le Bear side. I mean, you guys, go make your motions.
Well, I would say we'll close the public hearing portion of the meeting also.
Okay, public hearing portion is now closed.
And then we would, A is the Cornelia?
Yeah, Route Three.
A and D. So I'd make a motion that we approve B, I guess, on Le Bear Street. I don't, I mean, the eight square feet or whatever doesn't seem to be an issue to me. I think it's reasonable based on what...
So that's 2185.
And Sherman's second that motion. And we have a show of hands, Le Bear Street, B, and a vote, call vote.
Henry Hill.
Yes.
Sherman Rubin.
Yes.
Bossa LaCorte.
Yes.
Roger Black.
Yes.
Marian Alcindor.
Yes.
Okay, so variance 2185 is the Town Fair Tire side facing Le Bear Street was approved, can you answer me?
Thank you.
And now we're at 2184.
Aaron, you're gonna keep the pylon sign out front?
Yeah, pylon sign does, does comply, yes.
If we're taking the existing Midas tag out and putting the Town Fair Tire sign inside the existing structure, we're not changing anything there. Right, I think, you know, and Jesse brought up a good point that, you know, the discussion as to looking at the overall building frontage that faces the public way and utilizing less on one side and more on the other, and then, you know, it was utilized in the Panera Bread. And the same argument, Panera Bread also stuffs that the two sides on two bases were the identical size, that we weren't gonna have one larger on one side and one smaller. So, you know, when you look at the presentation, the discussion and the rationale, you know, this is very similar to the Panera Bread, except for this actually is public frontage. So the rationale of utilizing some of the linear footage to the other side to go with the same size sign on both sides was previously looked at by the board on the applications and therefore, be consistent with the application.
All right, so now we're going back to Route Three, 90 square foot side on the narrow end of the building. And there's a certain validness about the total length of the building when you're working from... The total, the linear feet of the building on both sides and averaging out, it does make somewhat of a sense there. So, anybody else have any opinions on that?
That question, I hardly hear you, sorry.
No, he's just asking the board minister, anybody has any comments about the, uh, the size of the sign facing Route Three?
Roger, anything?
Uh, no, I, I would make a motion to approve it.
Okay, do we have a second on that?
Also, yes.
All right, show of hands.
Do you want to state a couple of facts as to why you want to approve this?
If you want, yeah, due to the strange, uh, size of the building being long and narrow, and also, I think, because of the length of the setback for Route Three, which is a mainway, Main Street.
I also agree that the, uh, consistency with all the other stores in that direct location make a difference as well, based on the size of those letters. I think it aesthetically looks uniform.
In the dual road project, I think we talked about a lot, two, the fronts are two roads rather than just one.
Right.
So then we get a roll call vote?
Henry Hill.
Yes.
Sherman Rubin.
Yes.
Bossa LaCorte.
Yes.
Roger Black.
Yes.
Marian Alcindor.
Yes.
Okay, so variance for 2184 for the Town Fair Tire was approved, can you answer me?
Thank you very much. Yeah, thank you very much.
Good night.
I'll be back.
Right.
And then we have that, we can do to 2186, which is Champagne Center side.
I guess we're taking a quick two-minute break here for a second.
All right. And, okay, scratch.
He's wiping down, you might let him dry for just a second.
I don't know who all planned this, I just gotta give you kudos. Donna, wasn't you that got this whole Zoom thing put together? Drew, you guys? Way to go. I mean, for real, that had to be kind of Donna's job to throw this out, so.
Yeah, good job.
This is the last one.
It's probably not stolen.
No, but I need to go. Or I'll go tell my.
You guys on Zoom, or just take a couple of minutes to get a drink of water and necessary, you know, break things that you have to do. Also, just let everybody know we do wipe down everything in between public hearing members who come in here.
I can verify that.
Alan, sort of verify and make sure that you can hear me okay?
Yes, Dean, I can hear you.
Then you gotta make a statement that it was a statue of the issue that's going here and bring these things to the front. Yeah, but I don't want to stop over here, hate us in public.
But this lots that come in, it's all so small. The sheds are up against property lines and they've been there for years.
I will make a comment again to you that I usually recuse myself and I am, after fifteen years of being separated from the mall, I feel I made my fair decision on your request. I am good not like being the chairman, I will step away.
I'm good with you being here.
All right.
Okay, we're back resuming. So our next appeal is twenty-one eighty-six is Champlain Center, sixty Smithfield Boulevard. Requested to be allowed to install an additional eighty-three square foot sign on the west side of the building for an interior tenant five below, which is more than what is allowed in a commercial district. So as previously mentioned, this is the mall right here. Eighty-seven is here, Smithfield Boulevard. Best Buy sits right here, JCPenney sits right here. They're looking for that sign in between those two locations. There's currently two signs there. It's a commercial district. So as you get a little closer here, Best Buy, JCPenney's right in this little area here. There is a Dick's sign in there as well as a DSW sign in there. So here's the two current signs. They're looking to put five below sign right here. This is what it would presently look like if five below is approved and goes right there. Okay, turn it over to the mall.
Deja Vu, Russ Mahoney, Champlain Center Operations Manager. What we have is five below requesting an eighty-three square foot sign. As, the biggest thing that I just wanna emphasize is if we go back, you know, a couple photos, this sign is in, on the wall between JCPenney's and Best Buy's loading dock. This sign is practically hidden by JCPenney's, you know, loading dock wall, which is right over there. But this is something that they want. They want an exterior sign at this location. So of course, we're gonna be coming in front of the board to try to put this, you know, sign through. But this sign is, is only visible from the outer ring road if you're coming, you know, directly, you know, in front of that line of sight, hardly, you know, seen from, you know, Smithfield Boulevard unless you're going line of sight also, but you all have the elevation of the outer ring road. Couple other, you know, bullet points that I just wanna, you know, stress. Regarding whether the change would create an undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties, the proposed five below signage would not cause an undesirable change and is in line with the rest of the signage that is currently on the exterior of the Champlain Center facility. The sign is a total of eighty-three square feet, which is below what it should be, which is an allowable amount per town code. Champlain Center is located in the center of a seventy-five point five acre commercial property in the C Shopping Center Commercial Zoning District. It has been in continuous operation at this location for thirty-four years. The building on which the requested sign would be installed is substantially set back, which is six hundred fifty-seven feet from Smithfield Boulevard, thus not creating a distraction to drivers nor detracting from aesthetics or character of the surroundings. The proposed signage for this major tenant of the shopping center will assist in directing general public to the location and close this exterior entrance of the store. Regarding whether the applicant can achieve this goal by some other method, the goal of the sign is to provide identification to incoming customers so they know that the store is in the center, so they can easily see where the store is located before they park or enter. This is no way, no other way to identify the store's location from the exterior other than a sign on the building positioned directly behind the store. Regarding how substantial the variance is, we do not consider the request to be substantial relative to the size of the store, the building and the location. The proposed signage is within the allowable signage limits for the business in the town. Regarding whether it will have an adverse effect or impact on the physical environmental conditions in the neighborhood, an eighty-three square foot sign on a six hundred and ten thousand square foot building in the commercial shopping district will not impact the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood or neighboring properties. The neighborhood has various businesses and commercial enterprises with signage, nearly all of which have variances. Regarding whether the difficulty was self-created, the sign issue is not self-created. Five Below is a major nationwide retailer that is new to the area and the request is within typically allowable signage size limits. I'll let, you know, Lisa talk about this, but, you know, once again, I mean, we're talking about a store, a brand-new store, brand-new retailer coming into this area. Still coming into this area after all the COVID, you know, situations. We're talking, you know, a little less than nine thousand square feet with a eighty-three square foot exterior sign that is in a, a bad area.
Okay, so before you go anywhere, I just wanna point out some things. Will five below utilize any of these doors to get access to their unit?
That would be no.
Not for customers.
Five Below has no exterior door.
Just five below, not customers, just.
Five Below has no exterior door on that side of the building. That is all DSW and our electrical and sprinkler room door.
Okay, and then another point of clarification. An eighty-three square foot sign granted by the town is with a hundred-foot wide building, two-thirds away from a right of way. That's how you get that number, okay? Just to let you know, that's the perfect, it's not automatic eighty-three square feet, because you're six hundred feet away. It starts out being a hundred feet wide first. That gives you fifty and then a two-thirds multiplier gets you up there, okay? All right.
The only entrance to the store is gonna be in the common area. That's the only identified characteristics of the store besides the exterior signs for eighty-three square feet.
How much square footage is five below going? How's your guy?
Um, under nine thousand, probably around eighty-seven, eighty-seven hundred, you know, square feet.
Hi, I'm Lisa Getty, again, manager of the mall. And again, as with the signage request for Ollie's, I once again ask you to take into consideration current events. We had been working on this lease deal for nearly a year prior to the pandemic and we were literally within days of finalizing it right before the statewide retail shutdown. They were originally slated to open in August and quite frankly, now the potential opening has at best been delayed into twenty-twenty-one and at worst is at risk of falling through entirely. So, we're hoping the town will work with us and helping to make this happen by approving their sign request. They typically go into strip centers and so they're used to having their own storefront signage and they feel that this is important to identify them within the mall in a new market. As I mentioned before, the mall remains closed with no anticipated reopening date yet announced by the state. We're desperately trying to save this deal, bringing this national retailer to the town of Pottsburg despite the uncertain retail environment. As I said, our ability to find and retain tenants was tough enough before. Now it's more challenging than ever. I would like to also mention for reference, approval has been previously granted for interior stores that got larger signs, including Old Navy, which got a hundred and thirty-eight square foot sign. And the DSW sign you see there is a hundred and twenty-eight square feet. What five below is requesting is just eighty-three square feet. So we hope you'll look favorably upon this request, particularly in this tough economic climate. Thank you very much.
Lisa, before you go, a couple of questions, clarification. Square footage of Old Navy?
Square foot, of the sign?
No.
Oh.
At least space square footage of Old Navy.
It's about fifty.
Fifteen thousand, maybe?
Fifteen thousand?
Yes.
And square footage of DSW?
Fourteen thousand?
And Dick's?
Oh, Dick's is an anchor. Dick's is like fifty thousand.
Okay, just wanna give them all the information so they know what they're talking about.
Sure, sure.
Dick's is about fifty thousand square feet.
Okay.
What happens when the next person comes up and wants an outdoor sign?
I'm sorry, when the next person what?
The next tenant comes up and wants a sign on the exterior.
Well, honestly, it's something we try to discourage, because we know signage is tough to get and we understand the codes and the reasons for them. We had actually tried to work with them to come up with alternatives. We had suggested if they wanted to do a sign behind the glass main entrance by Target, to do something behind the glass, that then they wouldn't need to get a variance, which still remains in play if we don't get this, but they really preferred to do a sign based on what the existing signage looked like rather than something that was different than what's already on the building. We have had other tenants ask for signage that we have swayed to not have that be something we would, you know, go for. And we've explained the situation as far as needing a variance for every sign and that it is tough to get approvals. This tenant was very insistent upon it. Like I said, they're used to going to strip centers. If they were going into Consumer Square, they wouldn't even have to get a variance. So, so they're used to getting signage and they felt it was very important, because that's what their usual store package includes. So we're trying to accommodate them to get the deal finalized. But we did, they actually wanted a sign that was similar to the size of Dick's and DSW. We did talk them down to that. We picked the eighty-three square foot based on what the maximum allowable would be based, you know, if they had the linear storefrontage and so forth. So we at least got them down to making it that size instead of as big as what's there.
Open up the public hearing portion of the meeting. Anybody on Zoom or out in the parking lot that wants to speak to this matter?
I don't see anybody on Zoom currently.
Anybody on Zoom that's looking to voice an opinion on this variance? Any checks in the parking lot?
I'm going ready.
If somebody comes in, one of you have to go out.
Right.
Nobody out there?
Nope.
Okay.
No response from Zoom?
Nobody on Zoom? Heidi, you still there? No response?
She is, no. She hasn't written something? Nope.
All right. Board members have any opinions or questions that could you like to have answered?
I just have a concern that it seems like every inside store of this mall is gonna start having signs outside.
I'm sorry, I have no response.
Okay, thank you, just checking.
I believe we have these arguments for, at least DSW, I wasn't here, and we predict that it was, oh, because of the size of the store they were and that they were similar to an anchor store. And then, okay, are we gonna get into what the square footage of the store is and are we gonna change of ordinance? So, fifteen thousand now has an outside. So I just have a concern, because it just seems like we're just gonna keep going down this path, that it doesn't really matter, just because they want more marketing, we're gonna have the entire outside facility clustered with everybody's sign.
That's my point. I did go down to the county for the same reason. No meeting, doesn't need a majority plus one.
Yeah, I, I'm torn on the situation, you know, both sides of it. To a certain extent, I think it lessens the appearance of the mall. I don't have a time. I don't think it was originally because Collins got the variance in way back when, when the mall was actually first built. And Dick's just took that over. And DSW was just fairly recent, wasn't it?
Yeah, two years, yeah.
Mary Ann, anything?
The five below sign will have a LED, you know, lighting on the back. DSW has the letters that are, you know, lit up. Dick's is not a lit sign at all. There is no electricity to that sign at all.
Just to address the concern of, you know, is this gonna go down a road where every tenant is gonna want a sign? Like I said, we strongly try to dissuade tenants from requesting signs. So, we really don't come to you with most of the stores that want signs. This one, they're just really, you know, like I said, being fairly insistent on it. And I guess I would just wanna appeal to the sense that my understanding as to why these codes exist is really a lot for safety and aesthetic purposes. And I just feel that for this particular sign, there's really arguably no impact on the visit, because it's not visible. I mean, as Russ said, and if you can see from the other picture where the loading dock is, it's really not even gonna show. So, obviously I'm biased because I'm the mall manager, but I feel like to appease this tenant for a sign that's not gonna have impact for the reasons the codes were written, I just, I think it's worth approving. So, I just wanna add that to address the concern of that.
And not to argue against your play, but the issue for us is that it, it's not just this one tenant. It's what it sets going forward, is my view.
It's a precedent setting.
I appreciate that, I understand.
All right, anybody like to make a motion or further comments or questions?
I'll move that, we approve that.
To approve the sign?
Yes.
Okay.
If you're gonna, if you're gonna approve it, I again would want a statement of fact defining as to why you would approve this sign versus if you can't, you can't remember in the market from now. You know, what's, what is different about this store and this request? Whether it be the current, whatever you wanna find for facts, but just set something forth on the record, so you're not just approving it because it's here.
I think the DSW sign argument was, was that they actually had presence on that outside wall. Right now, we're talking about toward the interior store. Has no exterior wall.
Also, based upon the square footage, I believe that the zoning board also, you know, considered that an anchor. Somehow that got passed as a, as an anchor. We are not even recommending that this store is an anchor. We are not recommending that at all. We obviously are new to our positions and we're trying the best that we can to make sure that when we show up, that our signs are at the limit that they're supposed to be. We try not to identify any sign as an overage in square footage. And that's, that's pretty much it. We try to keep everything the way it's supposed to be.
Thank you. So right now we have, Roger's still up there.
Yeah, but I don't have a, I can't come up with a really good reason.
So you're moving your recommendation, your motion?
Or me, or you come up.
I'm not trying to be difficult, it's just, you know.
It's gotta be sensible.
Right, you gotta be sensible.
Is it because of the location that, you know, you feel so key? Is it because of the size? Is, you know, there's gotta be something, because like I said, when the next person comes in and wants it, you've gotta defend why you left that one and you turned the next person down.
Could I just suggest that, again, it's a matter of invisibility. I think with other places on the building, you could argue to not approve it because it would be a distraction. I just think, if you're looking for a reason to justify this one, I just go back to the fact that. I just go back to the fact that nobody can even see it. It's really just to make sure we get this retailer in from the Plattsburgh.
I have a bigger question, whatever.
Well, like I said, they're, they're used to strip centers. They, they, you know, a lot of these retailers, they have a standard store package. And they're like, okay, we're doing this size store and this is the size sign we do. And, you know, so this is just, and quite frankly, again, you know, to plead the pandemic card, but it's true. I mean, now more than ever retailers are, you know, they're asking for whatever they want because they know times are tough for developers to get leases signed. So, you know, they really actually wanted a bigger sign. They wanted a sign the same size as Dix and DSW. And we, you know, convinced them that the most we would ask for would be the 83 square feet.
Lisa, are they getting any signage on the free standing side?
No, no. They'll have no other exterior signage.
So that might be another reason.
I'm just, I'm throwing things out there for you guys to grab a hold of, whichever way you go.
Probably 30 other stores inside the mall that don't have an interesting sign.
Where, where in the mall physically is this store going to be located?
When you come in, the entrance between Target and Best Buy, it's going to be right beside Best Buy. So that's why we've offered them, if this doesn't, if this doesn't get approved, then their next option would be to put a sign in that entry.
So is this going to be a new store where there's not a store right now?
Is this going to be a jewelry store?
It's going to go from Zales to DSW.
Yeah, right where the jewelry store was right there.
Yeah, the whole way.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah.
So why is there, why is there no space on the pylon out front?
Because we already, that's already full. Ollies is going to take the last space that Gander had had, and that's all our slide.
And all the other tenants are occupied still and that's why their signs are there?
We run into the same situation where soon as you put somebody else up on that sign and everybody else is going to say, I want to.
Yeah, I was going to say, they did actually ask to be on the pylon. We just don't have any more room because Ollies will take the last slide.
Would this be the biggest store in the mall without an exterior sign?
Would this be the biggest store in the mall without an exterior sign?
Yeah, calling stores is a bigger.
Should have parked straight up there.
Uh, I don't think so off the top of my head. I would have to look. The biggest store without an exterior sign.
You'd have to count your free standing signs, so.
What other stores are over 10,000 square feet? Old Navy and DSW label five signs.
Yeah.
Is there anybody else that's up there?
Yeah, dress worn left.
Yeah, so actually, this would be the, this would be the biggest store without an exterior sign if they didn't get it. Yeah.
Without, without looking at, you know, a marketing, you know, plan, this is definitely, you know, one of two stores that is this large.
We're actually relocating three stores to make room for this one.
I think justification with the fact that they don't have any other exterior sign is justification for putting that up.
Are there other, how many tenants do not have exteriors?
Uh, about 40, 40 something? And I promise you, we won't come ask for signs for the existing tenants if they get this one.
Maybe a new manager, you never know.
Our, our pylon signs on Smithfield and I-7, obviously they're being restricted for tenants. So we're, we're running out of room. We'll, we'll be back, you know.
It's a great column to have.
Yeah, we'll, we'll be back at some point in time because we need to, we need to add some, you know, spots. We'll, we'll leave it at that.
Well, we both, but that's a whole other subject.
Motion on the floor? Well, I never completed the motion.
Yeah.
You withdraw it? I'm, I'm ready to withdraw it. Unless you guys can come up with something.
I think Matt is coming up with the fact that larger store without any exterior signage. Again, that's, that's where we're sitting at right now. And they do have the option of trying to put something up into the entranceway.
Well, our, our understanding per code is that anything we put behind existing glass, we can do without a variance.
That's correct.
I'll be honest with you, I don't think that'll look good. I think it'll be better to put this sign where it's located than to put a light up sign in the main entrance. So I'm not saying that as a threat. I'm just saying like, that's the only other way we're going to appease them. So keep that in mind that that's our backup plan if this doesn't fly. And I feel like aesthetically speaking, this is the better option.
So you're, you're finding a fact to be the fact that it's a very large store with no other signage outside? And that as far as aesthetics go, where this is being located is a minimal distraction based on the location that's going in the mall? You know, those are at least some findings affecting the debate. So it's not just an approval if they like the idea.
I'll make a motion to approve it on the basis that I believe it's a reasonable request given the size of the store, the lack of other outdoor, uh, motion or signage. Second.
Want to show the hands? We got two over there. Roll call vote.
Mary Ann.
I really don't like it, so no.
Chairman Reverend?
Yes.
Last level court?
No.
Roger Black?
Yes.
Mary Ann Alvin?
No. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so for variance 2086, it was a two to three, no, it failed to pass. So we're now moving to 2187, lot three Baker Road.
Thank you. Hello.
Hi.
Hi.
So while they're getting cleaned up, I will present the project here and then I'll turn it over to you guys to give any other further information and for them to ask you questions, okay?
Okay.
Okay, we're here for appeal number 2187. Cory Smith, Courtney Morrow.
Yes.
Morrow. And this is lot three Baker Road. Area variance requests to be allowed to construct a new single family home on a corner lot with a future town road, which would encroach 29 feet into one of the 50-foot front yard setbacks, leaving only 21 feet, which is now allowed in this district. So this is 374. Ran Hill Road is up here, so we're going to the west. This is Baker Road here. This is the new subdivision Sawyer Lane here. We're looking at, on the opposite side of the road, there's existing house. And then there's a vacant lot right here. This is lot three of this subdivision on this side of the road. So as you can see, this is all zone R2. This is that future proposed town road. This is the lot they're looking at. So they're looking at a variance off of this future proposed town road. So right now, this is a dirt road. It does belong to the people across the road, their subdivision. They're actually going to do a subdivision back here behind that. That will be a town road that comes in and moves back out again. But they're looking at this lot right here. They want to put a house here and they will gain access here. But this is a front yard. It doesn't, that won't be a 50-foot front yard setback. Here's what that lot looks like right now. So it's kind of open, but it is treed on three sides. This was the original subdivision, subdivision map that shows that future town road right here. So this is the proposed lot they're looking at. Okay, and this is your plan here. So is this the garage here? Is it?
Front facing?
Yeah. Okay, so your driveway will come off the Baker Road into the garage, not off the future town road, correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right, anything else you'd like to present to them or tell them?
Sure. Hi, I'm Courtney. So we're requesting, as we know, an area variance to be able to build our home with curb appeal and be in harmony with the neighboring properties. Our lot is currently on Baker Road. It will become a corner lot on the new side road. When we did purchase the lot back in June 2018, we didn't know that it was actually going to be developed into a full road. And because our lot is longer than it is wide, when our house is centered on the lot, it will leave 21 feet on each side. Based on our house plans, the garage is going to be on that side, as you can see as well in the picture. The total square footage of the home is 1620 square feet. This plan is in alignment with other homes in the neighborhood, which are of similar size or slightly larger. Our house plan and style is similar to the neighboring properties. And approval of this variance would allow us to build a quality home with three bedrooms, two bathrooms, an attached garage that would possess similarities, qualities, and the value of neighboring homes in the subdivision. And we do plan to use this home as a permanent lifelong residence for a growing family, which is reflected upon our current floor plan and square footage. Who, I'm sorry, it's really hard to talk and breathe in this space. So we don't feel that it's feasible to turn the house so that it's perpendicular to Baker Road. This would significantly reduce curb appeal. It would go against the character of the neighborhood. If you would take a ride or a drive down Baker Road, all of the homes are facing parallel to Baker Road. And furthermore, by turning the house perpendicular, this would place our front or backyard in direct line with the neighbors, which I mean, would not really go with the feel of the rest of the homes in the area. And it would significantly reduce the front and backyard as well. This would also reduce our front and backyard area. And if we slid the house over and did it off center, we'd be, the side of our house would be really close to our neighbor, which would just look, it would look off. The character would definitely be off. Furthermore, we chose a rent-style plan due to energy efficiency. We need a limited amount of stairs for our dog and our parents who are older. Cory's mother is legally blind. And also for ease of maintenance. And we currently own three vehicles, a snowmobile, a four-wheeler, and a fishing boat, which the bulkhead will primarily be in our attached garage. So in a nutshell, that's our request. And we hope that you would consider it.
Just a point, Mr. Chair. So as this lot exists, this would be a front yard setback, that would be a front yard setback. The furthest distance would be a rear yard, so that's the rear yard. And this would be the only side yard. So this is 20 feet, 50 feet, and I believe this is supposed to be 30 feet. So they're 139 feet, they're 21 feet, they're 50 feet. So it's only this 50-foot front yard setback here that's out of compliance.
Can we take into consideration a road that's not there?
Yes, because there's a subdivision, there's a subdivision plan already. It was designed when that lot was cut out in the back. That was a proposed 50-foot right-of-way access there as well as one further down. So that could be developed in the back, back in 2005, 2006, at that timeframe. So it was always planned that that would be a future right, uh, public right-of-way, yeah. It's just now being done. So there is a subdivision in there right now. Sawyer's art, they show a 14-lot initial subdivision for that first phase on that side. And they're using that area as their first right-of-way to get in.
The other thing, just comment, it looks like that when you showed the subdivision, that the lot is 150 feet wide. So I don't know that these numbers are accurate as far as the side yard, which would probably alleviate some of the problem. Because I'm showing that there'd be 68 feet remaining. If the house structure is 82 feet wide, it's a 150-feet-wide lot. So that if we ended up moving it towards the right, so there was 30 feet on the left-hand side, the argument that we've used in the past when there's been two roadways is like, once they face a road, let that be their frontage and that the other side be a side yard, they would meet the 30-foot setback on the proposed new road.
So he's questioning the numbers. You put 82 feet long is your house?
Yeah.
21 on one side, 21 on the other side. That doesn't equal 150, so.
We went off the measurements from our.
So this is just from the, our tax from the town?
Yeah.
So based on our parcel, the dimensions say 124 by 265.
I believe that would be your front yard because there's an apron right there. But your lot is actually 150 feet wide once you get past the apron of the proposed road.
Okay.
So it gives you more footage than you would have expected.
So that would be instead of the.
During would be degrees.
30.
We make it 30 feet, which would be in compliance with a normal side yard based on what we, you know, we've done in the past by having two road fronting on the lot.
Okay, open up the public hearing portion of the meeting. Anybody like to speak to this matter?
Okay, so based, based off the calculation they showed here, they would actually have 46 feet? So they're, you're looking for only a fourth-foot variance on your left side.
But I'm saying if they moved it to the right, you could argue that there's actually 30 feet on that left-hand side.
Well, I'm just going to, so if it's 21, 82, and 21.
Right.
And they subtract that from the 150, right, is what you're doing?
So it would be a difference.
So there's 68 feet. But I'm saying, so that gives, if you had 20 feet on the right, you'd have, what, 38 feet, 48 feet on the left? But even if it was 30 feet on the left, if they wanted to center it, to meet what a current side yard setback would be, would match. So however they want to do it.
Drew, is there anybody out there wanting to talk?
So we're open to public hearing. Do we have anybody on Zoom that wants to comment to this?
See, public hearing portion of the meeting. And we're looking at a variance that has been reduced down to 4 feet.
At the moment, yeah.
What we're looking at is you end up with 68 feet to use.
Right.
For your side.
For your side yard. So if you want the house centered on the lot, you could easily have, say, 38 on the left and 30 on the right, or 48 on the left and 20 feet on the right. But if you want to center it, you could do something.
So that's what he's asking you is, is your, is your goal to center that house? And then whatever you have on the, the one side is what you're going to have? Whatever you're going to have on the other side is going to be, is the balance of that? You're looking to make those equal? Or are you looking at, hey, I'm going to come off 21 feet on that right property line in order to get myself further distance away from that public right, right-of-way?
I mean, I would prefer it to be centered.
Because based off what you answer is what they're, if they grant a variance, will be what that variance is. Then when you place your house there, you will have to place your house there.
Right.
There's no change in mind afterwards.
Right.
Okay, so either want it centered in half and half on each side? Or you're going to do the 21 feet and you have additional, you know, feet on the other.
From the Rose Road.
Still would be the 50 feet, right?
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, no matter what, you're going to get variance, either 4 feet or something like that.
Then I would have it centered.
So where are we going?
It's going to be 34 feet on each side.
Are you going center?
16 foot.
If they're not centered, it'd be 34 feet on each side of your.
Now, for the board, you have to look at it and say, what is the least variance necessary? So now the board can tell you, you know what? If you scoot that all the way over to the 21 feet that you proposed, you don't have to grant a two or three square, a two or three-foot variance.
But we also don't.
So, but that's what the board discussed.
I mean, I would just argue on the other side of that, and as we're throwing all these numbers out, that in the past, because of the double-sided road, we've allowed at least a minimum 30 feet. So you could, I would be inclined to say if you wanted to center it, you got 34 feet. I wouldn't have a problem because we've done it at 30 feet under than two roads on a, on a lot.
Corner lot, yeah.
Corner lot, yeah.
Okay, I'll just, this is an actual one that I can actually review, saying whether or the benefit can be achieved by other means feasible to the applicant. And being a corner lot is where the difficulty comes in. Undesirable change in neighborhood character or to nearby properties. It's trying to keep it aesthetically pleasing. Whether the request is substantial, I don't really find it that substantial. And whether the request will have adverse physical or environmental effects. And I don't see any of those here. So are we centering or?
Yes, correct.
So we're looking at a 16-foot, 16-foot variance for the frontage on the proposed road. Do we have a motion on that?
So you're 34 feet from each side?
Right.
I would make a motion that we approve it because the overall 50 foot on both sides is overmet by another 18 feet. Like, we've done that in the past with a corner lot. So I, I would make the motion that we approve the 16-foot.
We got a second by chair. We got to show a hand. And we have a roll call vote.
Henry Ann.
Yes.
Chairman Reverend?
Yes.
Last level court?
Yes.
Roger Black?
Yes.
Mary Ann Alvin?
Yes.
Okay, so this variance was approved unanimously. Just want to let you know, so you have 16 feet. And so I mean, you have to be 34 feet on that side. If you decide you want to push it over, you can push it all the way to the 20 feet if you want more room. You just can't push it the other direction, okay? So I, so you do have a little bit of wiggle room there.
Okay.
You just can't be even closer than 34 feet on that one side.
Sure.
Okay? Okay, you're good.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
The other ones are all one.
Oh, yeah, I guess I didn't have to.
I don't know if we'll have any people. The last one was all, no one's here.
You two, you know?
Oh, that was not here.
Sure.
We'll have to do it from both of them, but.
So we're into 2188?
All right, so everybody's back, we're good to go. So appeal number 2188, quality manufactured homes, 30 Arch Huberto Road. So, appeal number twenty-one eighty-eight, quality manufactured homes, thirty Archie Burdo Road. A use variance request to be allowed to expand the existing mobile home park by adding four additional manufactured homes, which is not allowed use in industrial district. So, here's I eighty-seven, here is Archie Burdo Road, this is Route twenty-two, this is the Iris Settlement Road here, and we're looking at this existing manufactured home park right here. They would like to expand and add four more spots right here. So, as you can see, it is zoned industrial currently right now. Closest MH is over here, and this is commercial down here. So, here's what the, uh, the manufactured home park looks like right now. These buildings have been, uh, removed, so these no longer exist. As it switches, okay, so here's the picture I took. So, these, you see the pads there, but those buildings are no longer existing. They're looking to add four more spots over on this side over here. So, here's the proposed map from the applicant, so you can see these four lots right here is what they're looking to add. This is the entrance off of twenty-two that comes in. Okay, Dean, all yours.
Can you hear me okay?
Yep, I can hear you.
Essentially, um, the applicant proposes to create these four additional lots, um, that will be utilizing the existing streets. Um, there's already the, um, public water, there's gas, and there's other utilities that are already within the area that serve the existing park. Um, essentially, um, part of this is a push as a result of a, um, a significant increase in the assessed value for this particular property. And, um, he's looking to, um, cover those expenses, um, with the, um, basically being the other taxes, uh, with these four additional lots. The, the park has been in existence for, um, forty-plus years, as I understand. It has been, um, a park that has been reviewed and reviewed by, and, um, inspected by the Clinton County Health Department. And these four additional lots as, um, part of the, um, site plan review would also be submitted to the Clinton County Health Department as an expansion of the existing mobile home park. In the narratives that were provided, you know, it shows a breakdown of, of, um, cost as is required in your standard of proof. And each of those items in, uh, your standard proofs for the, uh, use variance request, um, shows what that breakdown is, um, for the, the park. And the addition of the four units, um, you know, is going to be an extension of what is there, the character of, of the, of the area, the mobile home park. This request for the use variance, um, it's, it's not a use that is, uh, unique for this area. It is going to be, um, alongside, adjacent to an existing mobile home park. And prior to, uh, or some of the slides, prior to this slide, um, you can see a part that the land to the west, which is on the, uh, opposite side of, I mean, the old railroad tracks, um, is another existing mobile home park. And there is also, um, to the north, northwest of this existing park, there is, um, an additional mobile home park that is significantly larger. So, it is a, an expansion of a use that is needed. Um, there are, um, requests, um, for any available lots and, um, which is another factor as to why the applicant is looking to expand this particular mobile home park. It's not a, um, this, being that the zoning and we have researched to try to find out when this became a, um, designated as a, um, industrial district and it was, uh, couldn't really get an answer as to when that happened. We don't know if, if this, um, area was zoned for a, um, mobile home district and, um, it was modified or changed to, um, to the existing, which is the industrial. There is the one industrial use that is, um, to the north, which is a slaughter facility. And actually, um, part of that industrial area that is currently labeled as an industrial district is in an area that, um, likely will not be able to be used or developed as such because of, um, some environmental restrictive restrictions, meaning the wetlands. Um, we, we do believe that this park has been in existence at least since nineteen seventy-seven. The Clinton County Health Department records, um, go back to that timeframe for this mobile home park. Um, the expansion of four is, is, um, not a significant change. It's not a change in the, the character of the use. Um, so requesting that the zoning board review this and, and grant the applicant uh, the use variance for this, for the, uh, four-unit expansion. It's also my understanding that the, um, town, either through the planning department and along with the, uh, uh, zone department, had looked at a change in zoning designation for this parcel along with the next parcel to the west, which is, um, the peel number twenty-one eighty-nine, um, that would either change it to a mobile home district or a district that would be, uh, allow this type of use.
Okay, questions?
Granting of the use does provide the applicant to the ability to maintain, um, much needed use, mobile home park, for this area. And that's, I, I close my, my discussion for any further review by the board members.
Okay, questions by the board?
Okay. Right now, the return on the investment for the area is not meeting your basic tax requirements? Correct?
Okay, repeat that, the return on investment is not what?
It's not, from what his information is all about taxes for the county and school taxes.
Okay, Dean, he's asking about the return on investment? It's, it's currently not, but this would help get closer to it, or what?
Not current, basically, um, just the, the town and county tax alone. This property has seen a three-hundred-and-eighty-seven-thousand-dollar increase. It jumped from six-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand to eighteen dollars, um, from eighteen to nineteen. And with that three-hundred-and-eight-thousand, three-hundred-and-eighty-seven-thousand-dollar increase, the, uh, the taxes, the town, county tax alone, um, have jumped almost forty-four-hundred dollars.
Does anyone appeal, does anyone appeal that or agree that assessment increase, Dean?
What's that?
Does anyone have?
Do you know if the owner had, agreed that, raise an assessment?
No, I do not, I do know that, um, from what I understand, across the board, uh, mobile home parks have seen a significant increase. Mobile home park on the, uh, west side of the railroad tracks, um, is, or recall, was, um, slightly more than the assessed value of this park. Also, the school taxes, um, with that increase, the school taxes alone were almost eight-thousand dollars.
But I guess I would argue, you know, without talking to, um, Brian Dowling, what the reason for the increases in any of these properties are, because I can't imagine he had any financials to go by. So, what argument would he have had to use to increase the assessments? Is it because it's a mobile home park, or is it because it's off the highway and that has more value than its current use?
It was brought, my understanding is it was brought more in alignment with other mobile home parks. As far, as far as the assessed value.
Do you know that, when he does the assessed value, is he, is he going off the rental incomes? Or is he going off the value of the lane, the value of the?
Mr. Leclerc was, he did give it a, a explanation and, um, the, um, I want to make sure that I get this correct. Um, it was either the income in or it was the number of units that were in mobile park, which it was tied, really, they are tied together, obviously. Um, so, the, this particular increase in assessment, um, between the school and the town being almost, uh, uh, twelve-thousand dollars, um, is a result of this park being brought in, um, alignment with what other mobile home parks, um, are being assessed or have been assessed.
This seems like, I mean, I'm not gonna, it doesn't matter, I guess with the assessment, it's been, you know, based on what the assessed value went to and the number of units you had in the park, it's about a forty-one-thousand-dollar per-unit assessed value, which seems high for most mobile homes, I guess, but I'm not sure. Um, so if you add another four, it seems like you would only exasperate the problem because they'd have to go up another hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars in the assessed value next year.
If I recall, the mobile home park to the west, which I believe it was at a million-two, um, I think there were twenty-nine units there? That was at a, a forty-one, forty-one thousand, over forty-one thousand.
Yeah, it's using the same factor of about forty-one thousand, but like I'm saying, if you, if you add another four to this property, you're gonna actually increase your assessed value another hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars at almost fifteen percent.
It may, and correct, the, the, um, and what he is trying to do, um, and I think that, um, some of the mobile park, um, offers will acknowledge that, you know, you try to hold in check your rentals, your rental costs. And, um, and that's what he's trying to do. And, 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 and his, his opinion that these four additional units is going to help him offset his expenses, um, that are now coming in between the school and the town.
Alan, two questions. This is not conforming pre-existing, so we're actually going to give a variance for being a use to actually have a trailer park there?
Right, so this is a pre-existing, non-conforming because the district is in today. It may have been conforming way back then.
Whenever.
Because of the way the district is now, it's non-conforming, correct? It's an expansion of that, that's why it's here.
Okay, and did the planning board do the seeker on it, or do we need to do?
No, the planning board has only done the sketch, so we got to do our seeker.
We gotta do the seeker too.
Yep.
Do these, does this survey meet current mobile home town rules?
Right, so we don't, we don't, I mean, the, the planning board will look at the site work of this.
Okay.
But mobile homes are, are predominantly regulated by the health department. So, we're just looking at, you know, the spacing, do they have enough space there to actually put a home in there? And if it was the lease space or the rental space of that, that spot, does it meet with our setbacks? So, is there enough room there for that, is what we're looking at.
So, we do have regulations that govern mobile home parks, as far as that's concerned, or not?
Yes, and this is in offense.
We, what?
Yes. Somebody squared a foot for.
Right, so we, we have.
Doesn't matter.
Yeah.
So, it meets the current standards?
Yes.
All right. When we look at the criteria that we have to go through is cannot realize a reasonable return substantiated by the evidence of competent financial. And I believe that's what he's trying to show with the tax information that he has supplied. The alleged hardship is unique, it does not apply to a substantial portion of the district or neighborhood. The neighborhood is actually fairly kind of dense with mobile homes and mobile home parks in that area. The requested variance will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood, and again, it's a mobile home area for the multiple. And it has not been self-created, which the rationale is that the increase of the assessed value and the associated tax increases is what's causing this problem.
Okay, just to confirm one of the things that Dean said, if you look on this zoning map, so those two lots, so the one on the right-hand side, I mean, the one we're talking about at the, at this moment is this one here, this lot, expanded four lots? Or the next variance, we're talking about this one? It, he is correct in saying that we as the town, planning department, as well as the codes and zoning department, are recommending these two lots be returned, if they wasn't before, but make it part of the MH district right here, and then leaving the commercial down here, and then we're looking at here, because these are all predominantly, uh, manufactured homes right here as well. But I believe, uh, from this point up, that is a big, large lot, and it might be hindered by, uh, wetlands. So, but right now, we do know we're making the recommendation for these two lots to become an MH district.
The, the property that's on the, uh, what is it, east side of the highway there, those are both, now, up to the right.
Up here?
That, that's all mobile homes in there as well.
That is.
Even though it's not a mobile home district.
Right, that, they're, they're actually, it's a mixture. So, there are some stick-built homes as well as, uh, manufactured homes, and then this, this part right, right here at the end.
Yep.
This is a mobile home park, and then we have individual lots up here.
And so.
Runway drive.
Is the lot that we're talking about currently is, in the application, it says it's twenty-nine acres, is that correct?
These two right here?
No, just the one.
That's right.
Right, so, so the, these, this is the current variance we're looking at right now.
Right, is that twenty-nine acres?
Yeah.
Just want to make sure those are the full properties.
The other item is, Dean, can you talk about some of the other, uh, industrial uses that would be allowed in that area to start with? And why they won't be able to be used or make a financial difference to you?
So, Dean, he's, he's asking, you know, going through the use table, are there any, uh, industrial uses that could be utilized in this lot?
Basically, he, um, the town has, um, public water, um, in this area. Um, and I believe that was an improvement that was made, uh, probably in the last five, ten years. Um, and he has had, um, individuals, um, and it was never elaborated exactly who it was, but, um, interests, um, within this, this property. And one of the drawbacks, uh, to that was no public sewer. And he, um, a number of years ago, with different administration, um, he wanted to move forward with just this type of, um, activity and expansion. He was asked to hold off, um, there was, uh, development that would be coming to this, this interchange. And, uh, that would create some type of, whether it be the industrial or some other commercial type of activity. But there has been nothing. He's waited almost forty years, um, for something to be coming into this area. And he's gotten to a point where he, he, he's tired of waiting, and he needs to get, he's looking for some type of return from his property. And, um, this is, this is the one use that there is an interest. He has more interest with, uh, mobile home units that are made available within this mobile home park. And that, that's where he's gone. He, he's, he's decided to move forward, um, with an expansion. This, this will be, there will be still remaining lands that, um, of this parcel that, um, can be utilized as, if it's changed to a commercial, some, a commercial use that would allow mobile home activity. There's still that option, that ability, um, for some type of commercial activity. Um, but at this point, he, he has had more interest in the mobile home park than any other type of activity.
Some of the uses that are listed, obviously, there's no reason to have a parking garage there, but there are other items, uh, storage yards, service facilities, equipment sales. Any of those, can you explain some of them?
So you look at, did you hear, hear what he said?
Um, part of that, if you look at this, this interchange, and if, if, um, the last, um, bit of improvements that has taken place within this general area, and I don't mean on the, uh, Rusty's side of the interstate, but on the Eastley's side was the, uh, I think it's now a Clark's, and there's been one other garage. And on the opposite side of, um, twenty-two, there was Jeffers Steel, and then there was, uh, to the north of that, there was another, another building which is exflow, and I believe, um,
Pierre Larry.
Those, those were buildings that were built in the mid to late eighties. I worked for the firm that did the surveying on that area. That's the last. If you look at what has happened, and the other, other activity has been on, on the west side of the interstate, on the east side between the interstate and Route twenty-two, and that's Bart's Grocery Store. And even then, that was an existing building that was remodeled to accommodate the store and then Dunkin' Donuts. There hasn't been anything since, um, since the mid-eighties, the late eighties, for any type of, of development near this interchange.
Open up the public hearing portion of the meeting, is there anybody on Zoom or outside that wants to speak to this matter?
You need to announce it.
Okay, so open up the public hearing. Uh, I will point out that they did go down to county, uh, and again, they didn't have a meeting, so majority of those ones not needed. I do have two letters that were sent.
Those are actually on the other variance.
All right, twenty-one eighty-nine?
Yep.
Both of them?
I believe so.
Okay, I'll save those for the next one. Sorry. All right, so Drew is checking outside, see if there's anybody in the parking lot, then we'll come back and check on Zoom, see if anybody's on Zoom that wants to voice their opinion on this variance. Do we have anybody? I don't think we have too many people left on Zoom, do we?
Nope.
So we have, uh, Donald Hubbard, and we have Norman Menard. Either one of you guys looking to make a comment on this one?
Uh, no, this is Donald Hubbard, I'm looking at twenty-one eighty-nine, I'm looking for that one.
All right. So.
So who wants to do the seeker review?
Okay, so Matt's got the, so we're closing the public here, we're gonna do the seeker review now.
Will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations? No small impact or moderate to large impact?
Well, I say small, I tell.
Small, okay. Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of?